Will you take the clock to take each other?
(laughing)
The courthouse will call me in the morning.
(laughing)
(inaudible)
Are they ready?
Yeah.
Ready?
Can't be fortunate, Ted.
No.
I'd like to call the November meeting of the Lafayette City Council's order. Please rise with fudge allegiance.
My flag shall wave in the light of the United States of America and to the people who live in this land, one nation under God, in this world with liberty and justice for all.
Could I ask you to please to remain standing for a moment of silence. Councilman Reynolds' father, Ralph Reynolds, passed away this past week, and could we have just a moment of silence recognizing him? Thank you.
Thank you.
Would the clerk please call the roll?
Heidi?
Here.
Clinker?
Here.
Reynolds?
Stand.
Campbell?
Here.
Brown?
Here.
Allersmeyer?
Here.
Williamson?
Here.
Downing?
Here.
Meyer?
Here.
For him present.
Thank you. We need a motion to temporarily recess for the purpose of public hearing on Resolution 2014-11 and 2014-12. Mr. Campbell?
I'll move.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds.
A second.
All right. All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We are now temporarily recessed for the purpose of holding public hearing on these following resolutions. Do you want to call the first resolution?
Sure. Resolution 2014-11. A resolution declaring the designation of certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approving the application by Tate &amp; Lyle Ingredients Americas LLC for property tax abatement, Tate &amp; Lyle Ingredients Americas LLC, Phase One.
Thank you. Are there any members of the audience here tonight wishing to address at this time for the public hearing Resolution 2014-11 regarding the Tate &amp; Lyle request for property tax abatement? Seeing none, then let's proceed with the next resolution.
Resolution 2014-12.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I move that we reconvene. Have we recessed? We have one more.
We've got one more. Let's just do recess for both of them.
A resolution declaring the designation of certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approving the application by James Investments LLC, DBA Lafayette Auto Supply for property tax abatement, James Investments LLC, DBA Lafayette Auto Supply.
Thank you. Are there any members of the audience wishing to address this particular tax abatement request by Lafayette Auto Supply? Seeing none, Mr. Campbell?
I move we reconvene.
Thank you, Mr. Clinker. Second. All in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. We're reconvene now and back in regular session of our meeting. The next item on the agenda is the approval of the minutes. There are two minutes to approve, October 6th of 2014 at the regular meeting and October 27th of 2014, special session. Ms. Aldersmeyer?
I move those minutes be approved as written.
Thank you, Ms. Exford. Thank you. Any discussion or corrections to the minutes? All in favor of the motion to approve both of these minutes indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. The minutes are approved. Presentation of disposable claims?
There are none.
Presentation of petitions and communications?
There are none.
How about reports of city offices?
Clerk's office, September. Fleet maintenance, August and September. Water pollution control, September. And a water work, September.
Thank you. And as a reminder to the public, those reports are on file with the city clerk's office and available for your review during regular business hours. Now, moving on to ordinances for second reading, the first ordinance up is 2014-27.
An ordinance recertifying Title X animals and making changes to address appeal procedures, repeat offenders, and free roaming and feral cat population in the city of Lafayette.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council? Ms. Aldersmeyer?
I move we hear and approve ordinance 2014-27.
Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Second.
Thank you. It's been proven it's been moved and seconded to consider ordinance 2014-27 for second and final reading. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I know we have been through this ordinance several times and had the special meeting and work session, but we did want to just make a few brief comments. Again, this has been a lengthy process. A lot of research has been done to try to come up with the changes to the ordinance that we believe gives our animal control and our police officers the tools necessary to deal with the dangerous dogs, the nuisance dogs, the wide variety of issues that occur that don't always fit into really neat categories out there that they have to deal with. And so, we think this ordinance with some of the changes and then with the feral cat changes begins to address that issue, but also gives us some of those other tools and some of the flexibility. I think Mr. Chosnick described to you the last time we were speaking that the animal control can make a few adjustments in there as they look at these situations because they are very different and I'm not sure any two of them is exactly alike and has the exact same circumstances. So, we appreciate your support on this. We do have Josh Clumpy is here, Lieutenant McCoy is here. If you'd like others to speak or if Ed would like to again talk a little bit about the ordinance. The one thing I did want to bring up, and Cindy, did you get a chance to pass those out?
Yeah.
I think you all have a flyer in your packet and it got you, the big six. You like that title? You know, we talked about it last time, but there were so many things being discussed, I'm not sure that it really adequately got brought to everyone's attention, that not only are we implementing the changes to the ordinance, but the city is also proactively working with the Almost Home Humane Society to provide opportunities for low-cost stay and neuter. And that's a program that we're going to continue to work with them. So, we're attacking this problem not only from the enforcement side and the ordinance side, but making opportunities available to our citizens who want to do the right thing, have some of the animals fixed, but may not have the financial resources to pay what that full cost might be. And so, I just wanted to bring that flyer to your attention and let you know that we'll continue to address this issue from both sides and hopefully that will help move it forward and improve the situation.
Thank you. Any questions of the mayor at this point? I know that there are a couple of technical amendments to make to the ordinance and perhaps now's the time to raise those and discuss those before we get into general public of the ordinance as a whole. Mr. Chosnick, did you have some suggestions?
Based on information that we received since the ordinance was first filed and reviewing the ordinance, the couple of technical amendments that I'm recommending is to exclude a colony caretaker as an owner because they really don't own the colonies that they take care of. And we also want to exclude feral cats and free roaming cats as a pet because they're not a pet. It's a specialty ordinance that's intended to address the overpopulation of the feral cats, bring them under control. And the other thing it talked about returning the cats to the wild and the intent is not to just return them anywhere in the wild, but back to the territory that they were captured. And so, those three changes are on pages four and five. I previously sent an email with those changes to the council and it'd be my recommendation that the council consider amending the ordinance on those three minor technical things to take that into account.
Ms. Aldersmeyer?
I move, yes, I agree.
Mr. Campbell? All right. So, the motion is to amend the ordinance on those three particular items as described by Mr. Chosnick and as was distributed by email to council members. Any comments on the amendment by council members? Any comments from members of the audience on the proposed amendments on those three technical topics that were explained by Mr. Chosnick? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote on the proposed amendment.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Amendment passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The amendment is passed. Now, we're back to talking about the ordinance as a whole in general terms. And Ms. Aldersmeyer, I know you had a committee meeting on the ordinance and perhaps this is the time for you to report to us on the findings of that committee.
At the last council meeting, this amendment was sent to the Public Health and Safety Committee for public hearing essentially to take comments from the public and from the people involved in redrafting this ordinance or recertifying this ordinance. Everybody that attended the meeting that evening and chose to speak spoke in support of the changes proposed in this ordinance. Many audience members spoke of their success on personally already paying out of their pocket for the TNR program and how it's made a difference in their neighborhood. We did have some residents with concerns about dangerous animal agreements and we were informed by Mr. Chosnick that it would not need a council vote, but that Lieutenant McCoy and Josh Clumpy were able to modify the dangerous animal agreement into the recommendation of the committee that that be modified to include a phrase about dangerous animals being muzzled when they leave the property to reduce bite incidence and also that they show proof of insurance to receive the animal back from the confines, I think it's Almost Home is where they go, just so that if the dog does get out again and there is an attack or property damage, there's insurance in place for the victim. So, we do recommend that modification be made to the dangerous animal agreement. We saw this as the most humane way to control the population. It seems like from what Josh informed us that evening that it's the best way to control the population without having to euthanize many, many cats. And there are also many other options, including trying to rehabilitate the cats as barn cats or adoptable cats and things like that. So, we found we were in agreement with all the proposed changes and we had a lot of public support at that meeting.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Councilman Aldersmeyer? All right. Any members of the audience wish to address this ordinance before we take a vote? I know that there was a... Yeah, come on, come on forward, sir. And when you address us, please give us your name and address for the record.
Yes, I was here during that meeting that she was speaking about and in front of the committee. My name is Steve Bogan with a 1020 Warehouse Street here in Lafayette. And I was one of the people who did, you know, worked with the tri-county trap, neuter, and release people through their auspices, worked with them to trap, neuter, and release feral cats, have seen it to work very well. My main concern is for this program to work, the part I don't like about it is the fines. Because you're already getting these people, these caretakers, who are going, you know, so I tend to let me spending their own money out of the goodness of their heart, you know, they're not... And I know that it's cheaper than killing them, you know, but I think that it's going to make people shy away if you include that fine because they're going to be thinking, oh, my goodness, now I'm going to be registered here as a caretaker. And if someone comes around and they see, you know, there's another cat or there might be two or three, some people got a lot of cats coming around, then they're going to be thinking they're going to get fined. And I don't think it's fair to those people to take on that burden because you're already getting free help, you know, and now it seems like coercion. It's like, you know, you either do this or else. I mean, you register, okay, that's fine, but now you're on the list and that's what people are going to think. They're going to think if I can't catch a cat, which I've told them at the committee meeting, it's very difficult to catch one twice. Some of them you can't catch the first time. So, then you get their shots in there for two years, okay, you're okay. Then this has got a health problem and you can't catch them. Then why? I mean, how are they going to do that? They're going to get fined for not taking care of their... But I just don't like the idea of the fines. I think it's overly onerous on the people who are volunteering their time and efforts and money. You know, they're already wanting to do it. You don't have to force them to. And I think if you do impose these fines or in this ordinance, you're going to alienate a lot of people and they're just like cats. You catch them once, you won't catch them again. And also, if they get fined, what if they can't pay $50 a day or $250 a day? You're going to put them in jail? I mean, how are you going to do that? And that'd be a terrible thing. I mean, the oldest question in the jail, what are you in for? Well, I fed some feral cats. You know, it's just not fair. I just don't think it's fair. So, that's all I have to say about it.
Thank you, Mr. Bogan.
All right. Thank you.
Can I address that?
Sure.
I think the fine, Mr. Bogan, is designed to encourage those, those that are doing what they're doing now, which is feeding the cats and caring for the cats. All they have to do is register. Josh explained that it is not a requirement that you catch a cat or you'll be fined, I believe. Is Josh here? Didn't you say catch it to the best of your ability? Exactly. And should a situation arise, I don't think they're going to go around and just give you a ticket for, you know, doing something right away. What they're trying to do is keep people from feeding cats and making colonies larger without making efforts to reduce the population.
I believe that it takes that, if you aren't a registered caretaker and you feed feral cats, you can be fined.
Right. But I think at that point, that's where animal control at the presentation that meeting said they would intervene and educate people about what they need to do. They're not just going to give a ticket right away.
Again, I understand that, but it does say that in the, you know, in the wordage. And it is going to make, I know a lot of people who do this, you know, and they're telling me that they're going to be scared to do it because of that, of that fine. And you can say all day that you're not going to get it, but if you get one, you've got one. And it's in the law, it's right into the law. This is my concern. I don't think it's necessary unless it's going to be a way to finance some other part of this operation. And if it is, I still don't think it should be on the onus of these caretakers.
Thank you.
I just ask your consideration.
Thank you. Any other comments? We do have a person who did not want to necessarily address the council but submitted a written letter and so, I'm going to ask the city clerk to read the letter into the record.
Attention, city council members. My name is Janet Donaldson and I have lived in Lafayette for forty-three years. I'm writing to you concerning these feral cats that roam the streets and properties of Lafayette. When I came to Lafayette, I went downtown and looked up the ordinance for this city. I was told there was a leash law for cats, just like there was one for dogs. I can plainly see that this rule is not upheld. If you try to catch all these cats that are feral cats and neuter them, how much money is this going to cost the taxpayer? Plus, think of all the man-hours it is going to take to do this. What is the purpose of neutering them and putting them out to roam the city again? Do you realize the damage they do to property owners? First, they urinate on your shrubs and damage them. They defecate in your flower beds. I don't enjoy working in my flowers when this happens. Since we have lived in Lafayette, we have put in three different sets of shrubs and all of them were damaged by cats. Do you realize how these cats roam at night and dig in your garbage and it is thrown all around the next morning? They are so hungry, they have to find food somewhere. I cannot see anything good about letting these cats roam free the rest of their life. Thank you for reading my letter, Mrs. Janet Donaldson.
Thank you. Any other comments from members of the audience on this particular ordinance?
Call for questions.
Questions been called. We will have a roll call vote on the ordinance.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2014-28.
An amendment to ordinance number 2010-04, inclusion of certain property in the local Centennial Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Downing?
I move to hear ordinance 2014-29.
Mr. Clinker?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to consider ordinance 2014-29. Chief Doyle?
Chief Richard Doyle, Lafayette Fire Department. I know a...
That million-dollar piece of equipment out there to take care of open fires.
Good. He can handle it very well. Thank you. I know this ordinance has been heard once. I just wanted to know if anybody had any further questions concerning this ordinance.
Any questions by council members of this ordinance? Somebody has a beeper going off? Please. Thank you.
Hold on. Tell it to her.
I thought it was a telephone. Okay. Chief, is there any new information provided on this?
No.
Any questions of council? Any comments from general public? All right. We'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Ordinance 2014-29.
An amendment to ordinance number 2010-04, inclusion of certain property in the local Centennial Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Thank you. What's the pleasure of the council? Mr. Downing?
I move to hear ordinance 2014-29.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to consider ordinance 2014-29.
Could all of those be looked as one?
He's on the...
I mean, they have to be read separately, but the presentation can be as one.
Thank you.
Ms. Jacobs?
Amy Jacobsen, Community Development Director. And I know you've all heard these ordinances before, so I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. But I also did want to recognize Mike and Phyllis Hunt, I noticed, who are here tonight, and thank them for their steadfast work and their dedication to supporting and making improvements to beautiful historic Centennial Neighborhood. So, thank you for making this a reason to hear the ordinance for the Centennial Neighborhood expansion.
Anything else on this ordinance?
I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions? Any comments from the members of the audience on 2014-29? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Twenty-nine is passed. Ordinance 2014-30.
An amendment to ordinance number 2010-11, establishing a local Walnut Street Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
Mr. Clinker?
I move here ordinance 2014-30 on second reading.
Mr. Reynolds?
A second.
Been moved and seconded to consider ordinance 2014-30. Ms. Jacobsen, you want to address this one?
I'm happy to answer any questions.
This is to establish a local district on Walnut Street?
That's correct. Yeah, this is a house that belongs to Habitat for Humanity. They're rehabbing it, using home funds that will be sold to an income-qualified buyer family.
Okay. Any questions? Any comments from members of the audience on this ordinance establishing a local historic district on Walnut Street? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is approved. Ordinance 2014-31.
An amendment to ordinance 2010-11, establishing a local lower Lincoln Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
What's the pleasure of the council, Ms. Exford?
I move for passage of ordinance 2014-31 on second and final reading.
Mr. Downing?
Second.
Ms. Jacobsen?
This house belongs to Faith CDC. This is a house, 1001 North Seventh Street, their first house that they've acquired and they're rehabbing. It's a historic home and it will also be sold to an income-eligible family.
All right. Any questions from council? Any comments from members of the audience? Thank you. We'll have a roll call vote on this ordinance.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. Next ordinance, 2014-32.
An amendment to ordinance 2010-11, establishing local Hart Historic District in the city of Lafayette, Indiana.
What's the pleasure of the council, Ms. Aldersmeyer?
I move here and approve ordinance 2014-32.
Mr. Brown?
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Jacobsen?
This house is also developed by Habitat for Humanity and will be sold to an income-eligible family. I'm happy to answer any other questions.
No questions? Are there comments from members of the audience on this particular ordinance for the Hart Street Historic District? Have a roll call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Aldersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is passed. Thank you, Ms. Jacobsen. Ordinance is for first reading, ordinance 2014-33.
An ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance specific to New County, Indiana, to rezone certain real estate from R1 to GB, DJS leasing, 241 State Road, 25 West.
What's the pleasure of the council, Mr. Clinker?
I move here ordinance 2014-33 on first reading.
Mr. Heidi?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to consider ordinance 2014-33. Mr. Teeter.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen of the council. Dan Teeter, Attorney General, Teeter and Schreier, represent the petitioner. John Houston is present this evening to answer any questions that you might have. We're asking for a rezone to GB. It's a one-acre or so track on the south side of what's now called US 52 and Teal Road West, just east of Old Romney Road. We have GB surrounding this site to the north. We have the hot Bobcat Auto Dealership to the east, more GB with Bartlett Dealership, gas station east of that as well. To the west, we have a large vacant tract that's zoned GB. We do have a small sliver that's directly west of our site that's zoned R1. Petitioners talked to that individual and he's indicated that they're looking at rezoning that as well. Houston Electric is at the corner of Old Romney Road and 52. They have a large site there. That is zoned GB. They also, on this site, they're contemplating moving one of their subsidiaries to this site in the future. There's two older homes on the site. Their homes really are unusable. We're looking at raising those in the future as well. We're unaware of any objections from any of the property owners. We received a unanimous yes vote from the Area Plan Commission on this matter as well. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
This site is on the, I would say, the north side of 52?
South side.
The south side? Will that impact those sidewalks that are going to go in there for the children? We had a fatality out there, if I'm not mistaken.
I don't believe you have a sidewalk there at this point, but I think it's...
Well, we have cones there or something, don't we?
Yeah, there's cones sitting out there. So if we redevelop that site, at that point we would put sidewalks in. I think we...
We'd put sidewalks into there. Thank you.
All right. Anybody else? Thank you. Questions?
Thank you. Do either one of our council representatives on the area plan want to address this?
It was just addressed. As you addressed it, it was a pass eleven, yes, zero against at the area plan.
Okay.
No comments against it and the staff recommended approval.
Okay. Any comments from the members of the audience on this request for rezon? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Hi.
Clinker.
Hi.
Reynolds.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Alers Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The ordinance is passed. Ordinance 2014-34.
An ordinance amending the Lafayette Municipal Code pertaining to sewer service and wastewater control in the city of Lafayette by amending 6.01 by adding a definition, amending the 6.03.04024 by adding total phosphorus.
Mr. Campbell.
Mr. President, I move for passage of ordinance 2014-34 as amended.
Thank you. Mr. Clinker.
Second.
All right. Yes, sir.
Do I understand this is to be tabled?
I think we have to vote and pass on it first.
Pass on it the first reading and then table it to time uncertain.
And a reason for tabling?
They have, well, Brad can explain.
I'll get into that.
Mr. Tally.
This ordinance amendment addresses new phosphorus limits that the state has imposed upon us. In August of 2013, we received our new discharge permit for the wastewater treatment plant. This permit added phosphorus limits, which the plant does not have the capabilities to currently treat it. Our deadline to be able to meet these requirements is August of 2016. So, once we received our permit, we went through the sampling and testing blitz to determine phosphorus concentrations throughout the city, where the loadings were coming from, kind of an overall picture, if you will, and we were investigating the options that we had at the plant for treatment. Our current plan, and just had a meeting on this today, we're going to add chemicals at the wastewater treatment plant to meet our requirements, which, like I said, begin August of 2016. One of the things that we needed to do, though, was to lower the concentrations coming into the wastewater treatment plant in order to avoid adding additional tankage, filtration, and very expensive equipment that we would have to add. So, what we looked at was, we reached a commercial and residential background concentration of 7.0 milligrams per liter. And this ordinance sets the concentration limits for all industrial and basically all sewer users at that 7.0 milligrams per liter. It also adds a definition for phosphorus. So, there's only really two changes to the ordinance, as it says before you, and then to your table comment, we're table to time uncertain, if you would, so that we can send this to the EPA. We need to get your first approval, send it to EPA to get their blessing, and then we'll bring it back for second reading. We have worked with them since we are under such a tight timeline for the city to be in compliance. They have promised us a quick turnaround, so hopefully December, January at the latest.
Hopefully?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Is this causing any of the Asian carp to glow in the dark?
You asked that last.
Mr. Brown.
Yes. What are the sources of phosphorus in the water right now? You said that?
Phosphorus is a naturally occurring nutrient. So, fertilizer is one thing, laundry detergent, you know, there are certain crops and such that produce phosphorus. You have phosphoric acid that some companies use to work with metal on, and so it's naturally occurring and it's in everything, but not at the concentrations that we're seeing. Our concentrations coming into the plant were quite higher than a normal.
My question is, how are we going to reduce the levels of incoming phosphorus?
These limits will enforce, be enforced to some of the industrial users, so that their limits will, they'll add treatment at their facility through pre-treatment and bring those concentrations down, which will make it lower at the treatment plant.
Thank you.
What do you see as a national limit? Like, do you have a trend number that missed?
That's a changing target right now.
Okay.
The folks in the Great Lakes are very tight limits, less than a tenth milligram per liter. The permits, the state just sent out a whole bunch of permits with these phosphorus limits in them. Everybody has one per milligram per liter. We anticipate at some point in the future that could come down, could be a tighter limit, but, you know, that's kind of the overall limit for the newer permits that have these limits in them.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Tally. Any comments from members of the audience on this ordinance 2014-32? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Hi.
Clinker.
Hi.
Reynolds.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Alers Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Ordinance passes eight to zero.
Ordinance is passed on first reading. Now, Mr. Campbell. Do you want to move to table it?
Uncertain.
To time uncertain. Mr. Brown.
Second.
All right. I don't know if that's open for discussion.
No.
Okay. That's not, that's a motion not open for discussion. Let's have a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Hi.
Clinker.
Hi.
Reynolds.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Alers Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Motion to table passes.
Thank you. That matters table then for time uncertain, and Mr. Tally will notify us when the EPA has given us its blessing. Moving on to resolutions. Resolution 2014-13.
A resolution of the 2015 Common Council calendars of meetings. This calendar has been vetted by the city attorney and the mayor, and there were subscribers there at caucus, and you've had a replacement that I placed in front of you, and also it's been replaced in the actual file, the ordinance as well.
Let's first...
We amend that probably for it to be September 8 instead of September 9.
Let's first get a motion to consider it, so let's get it on the table. Mr. Brown.
Mr. President, I move here and approve Resolution 2014-13.
Ms. Lee Swanson. It's on the table. Move to consider Resolution 2014-13, and then there's a request to consider as a scribbler's error to correct, what was the language?
It's on September 8, which is a Tuesday, and we originally had September 9.
We want to change it from September 9 to September 8?
Correct.
I'll take that as a scribbler's error. All in favor of that signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Any discussion on the resolution? Any comments from the members of the audience on this resolution setting the council dates for next year?
I'll be 3700 Red Bull Avenue. Just one other thing on that. When we have special meetings for the upcoming years, I know usually we have special meetings at 5:30 or 6 o'clock. I, when don't we have them at, typically it's seven o'clock start time instead of earlier or later? And then we usually have at least one in October, middle of October for the budget, and it's usually about 5:30 or 6 o'clock. I, for myself, would be here if it was at the typical time. And I know there was two other people that wouldn't make it on that time, and I'm just giving you food for thought.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Any other comments? A roll call vote on the resolution.
Heidi.
Hi.
Clinker.
Hi.
Reynolds.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Alers Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Resolution passes with a scribbler's error.
Thank you. Next resolution, 2014-14.
A resolution confirming the designation of certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approval of application by Tate and Lyle Ingredients Americas LLC for property tax abatement. Tate and Lyle Ingredients Americas LLC, Faith One.
It's a pleasure of the council. Mr. Downey.
I move to hear Resolution 2014-14.
Ms. Lee Swanson. Thank you. It's been moved and seconded to consider Resolution 2014-14. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Chairman, ladies and gentlemen, is this working?
I don't, that's what I was wondering. Can you hear in the back? You can hear it? All right.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, Mr. Chairman, first of all, I'd like to start by thanking this council for your work this entire year, and as in the past, as you know, because of all of us working together, we've been able to create a strong business environment where companies feel good about making investments in our community to add to and retain our existing workforce. The year in 2013 was a record year for us. 2014 has been a very good year because of the work of this council and everybody working together. So tonight, before you, you have another one of those opportunities with Tate and Lyle, who continues to make investment in our community. This is one of several investments that they've made in the last few years, and they are certainly a strong community partner and a strong employer in our community, and we would appreciate your support on these next two matters before you. We, I had an opportunity last week to be out at the Tate and Lyle South Plant while representative from Coca-Cola was in town, which is their largest customer. We got to meet with some of the representatives from Coca-Cola and certainly show our support for the Tate and Lyle plant and their relationship with Tate and Lyle and our community. And so we'd appreciate that support from the council this evening on these next two items. As Tate and Lyle continues to expand, we're fortunate that the north and south plants has the largest capacity in the Tate and Lyle footprint, and I think that means a lot and speaks well for our community to have that in a global marketplace. So we'd appreciate your support at this time. We do have a representative from Tate and Lyle to talk a little bit about the project, and between the two of us, we'd answer any questions you might have.
Thank you.
Thank you, members of the council, the mayor. Again, we appreciate the opportunity to be here today on behalf of our request for property tax abatements for the new projects. We are looking to increase our production of crystal and fructose at the south plant. Projects will be in two phases. Phase one would be about $15 million, primarily tanks, pumps.
Figure it again.
$15 million for phase one for tanks, pumps, and piping. Phase two would involve both engineering and equipment. Depending on the engineering design, we're still kind of going through some of that, but the second phase would be between $30 and $50 million and would add eight additional headcount out of the facility. I apologize. My name's Dan Kirk. I'm the south plant manager.
I was going to ask that. Thank you.
So, I do greatly appreciate the consideration tonight from council, and I'm available for questions if anyone has any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Kirk?
Did you get Coke to build a factory here pretty close?
No, we have not. Exactly correct. Exactly correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any comments from council? Any comments from members of the audience on this resolution 2014-14? This is when we earlier had briefly recessed to consider public comment at that time too, at the beginning of our meeting. Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Hi.
Clinker.
Hi.
Reynolds.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Alers Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The resolution is approved. Resolution 2014-15.
A resolution approving for tax abatement in an economic revitalization area, ERA Tate and Lyle Ingredients Americas LLC, phase two.
It's a pleasure of the council.
I move here and consider Resolution 2014-15.
Thank you. Ms. Lee Swanson. Thank you. Then moving second to consider 2014-15 tax abatement for the ERA for Tate and Lyle. Phase two.
So, we're available for any questions that you might have with the explanation carried.
Saying explanation. Okay. Any questions from council? Any questions or comments from members of the audience on this phase two tax abatement request by Tate and Lyle? We'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Hi.
Clinker.
Hi.
Reynolds.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Alers Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The resolution is approved. Resolution 24-16.
A resolution confirming the designation of certain real estate as an economic revitalization area and approval of an application by James Investments LLC, DBA Lafayette Auto Supply Company for property tax abatement. James Investments LLC, DBA Lafayette Auto Supply.
Mr. Campbell.
Mr. President, I move for passage of Resolution 2014-16.
16. Mr. Reynolds.
I second.
Then moving second to consider Resolution 24-16. Mr. Carson.
Good evening. Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director for the city of Lafayette. As the mayor pointed out, we're very fortunate that our large manufacturers such as Tate and Lyle are expanding, but we also have small businesses in our community that are expanding as well, too. James Investments doing business at Lafayette Auto Supplies makes a substantial investment for our small businesses in our community, and we have Ron Clinker representing the petitioners here that can give you a few more details, and we can answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members. I'm Ron Clinker with Lafayette Auto Supply, and the owners, John and Pat James, are here tonight as well to answer questions if needed and. We're asking the council for support of a five-year tax abatement for our warehouse distribution facility that we are looking at building at 1501 Kettner Drive in McCarty Lane. We're an 85-year-old, three-generation local wholesale auto parts distributor who's planning to retain 68 positions locally, and we're going to add a minimum of two full-time positions and one part-time position along with the investment. So, if you have any further questions or things that we can clarify, be willing to...
Any questions? Are you planning to move your downtown location?
The downtown location will stay operational, and I should have, sorry for not saying that. We're at 118 South Fourth Street, which is very close to here, and with the logistics and the growth of the business, we are out of space, and we want to, we need to grow. So, that position, that location will continue to operate. Down the road, who knows, four, five, 10 years, hopefully will continue to grow, and we'll see where that leads us, but it will still be operational.
How many employees are at the downtown location?
There are 68 employees that operate out of the downtown location.
And so then the new location is that, the same number of employees or new employees?
No. The new location, we will have an additional two full-time and one part-time with the 68. Obviously, we will most likely transfer some of the current employees from the downtown location to the warehouse distribution location. What it's going to do is help us serve our customers that are outside of town, south side of town. We will actually run some of the, obviously the deliveries out of that location. That location primarily, though, is a wholesale warehouse that will also distribute to other two locations in Indiana.
Thank you. Any other questions? Thank you, Mr. Clinker.
Thank you.
Any questions from council, comments? Any comments from members of the audience on this resolution regarding economic revitalization area for Lafayette Auto Supply? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Hi.
Clinker.
Hi.
Reynolds.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Alers Meyer.
Aye.
Williamson.
Aye.
Downey.
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you. The resolution is approved. We have some items on the agenda coming toward the end of the agenda that have all to do with bonds, and we have several people here. So, what I'd like to do is take a little bit out of order and consider Resolution 24-19 next, so that the following resolutions after that will be all on the bonds. So, let's consider Resolution 2014-19.
The resolution of Common Council of the city of Lafayette approving the order of the Tepico New Area Plan Commission.
It's a pleasure of the council. Mr. Downey.
I move to pass the Resolution 2014-19.
Ms. Alers Meyer. Okay. Moving second to consider 2014-19 regarding the approval, the order of the Tepico New Area Plan Commission. Is there someone to present this?
Good evening. Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director. As we discussed at council caucus, the situation that we're in right now is that we're running out of industrial land. We're kind of a victim of our own success. We've had a lot of successes here in the past few years, the Non-Shore Illumina Company coming here, GE Aviation, Heartland Automotive expanding into the south and to other parts of the city. We are running out of industrial land, so we need to look at where our next step is and where we can also encourage some more economic development. We have a great opportunity with the Hoosier-Hartland Highway that's been recently finished that comes into I-65, and that area would be a good area for industrial expansion. Also, there is a rail line that runs along the highway there, which is a very important asset that we have. We have a lot of prospects that ask for rail access, and we have very few opportunities for that. So, this will provide, again, some more industrial land for economic development to bring jobs and investment here and meet the needs of businesses in the future as well. This is, again, a new TIF district that'll be joint with the county, Tepico New County, and they're doing their process right now as well, too. And I have, we have Heather James here from Ice Miller can give you some more of the details, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions as well, too.
I have, Dennis, an apology. We divided stuff up, and this one was mine, but when you switched the order, I looked down wrong and lost my place there, so...
Sorry.
That's okay. No, it makes sense. But I do want to add to what Dennis said. As you know, the city and county has had some joint TIF districts together, and that area out there that's in the city limits is called Service Area 21, and that actually has a master plan that Hannem Waggles and Klein did several years ago on how to get our utilities from where they stopped there at the city limits, out past the cemeteries, underneath the Wildcat, and at least to 65 into that Heartland area. And quite frankly, we haven't even been able to come up with the money to do that phase because of the other things like the phosphorus and doing the combined sewer overflows that literally have, you know, taken the money that we've been able to raise through the wastewater fees to do those giant projects wastewater fees to do those giant projects that are mandated by the EPA and NIT, and which I fully support, we should be cleaning up the raw sewage going into the Wildback River. But it really has limited our ability to extend the utilities to that area. And as I mentioned the other night, the city did purchase about 12 or 13 acres of the old Eric's Airport site and have done all our testing that we know we can put in a well field there that can pump about 6 million gallons a day, but we're still going to need the money to put in a small treatment facility there and run the lines along the corridor, and we just don't have the funding, nor do I think we should raise the sewer rates of people that live here in town to fund those lines going up the industrial corridor. So, this is a way that will allow us to raise those funds, and I want to be clear about this, too. This is still going to take a long time to raise the money necessary to put all of that in. I don't want anybody to think this is going to happen overnight because it's going to take quite some time. But as Dennis said, that Heartland is a primary for development. There are people, I think, that are interested out there, not only landowners, but others, and we work with the county and really let the county designate the area since it's mostly in the county that they felt were appropriate for their constituency. So, I just wanted to add that and ask for your support.
Mayor, unlike some governmental units, it's good to see cooperation between these two units. What is the, how much of the cat or dog do each of us have in the fight for these things to develop with regard to the county and the city?
Well, we do, just like the other two, we split the proceeds 50/50.
So, 50% of the proceeds that are gained from this particular parcel of land will go to the city, and that will be used to pay off the bond issue that we're talking about later on, or is that...
Now, this is, this is, well, it could, yes, later on, we might have the bond, but to put them in, but my sense of it is that the county's money will go towards paying off the bond or putting in the facilities. We all know that we're doing this for one reason, and that's to get the utilities out to that road and to up that Hoosier Heartland, and that's the only, that's the reason we're doing this, is to raise the money for the utility. So, I fully expect that the county's money will be going towards paying off the utilities also, because it really won't generate enough quickly just splitting it, using in half of it. So, I fully expect all of the money will be used for the same thing, even though we technically would split it like we do the other two joint TIFs.
Is this all in Fairfield Township?
I don't believe so, because once you get further north, I don't think it is.
Does that come into Washington or some of the...
Yeah, because it goes up towards that.
Okay.
Yes. Perry and Washington.
Okay.
I think a good example of how we work together on the other shared TIF is right now, the Burlowitz Master Plan is just being completed for all that ground between McCarty Lane, Hagerty Lane, Veterans Memorial Parkway, and Creasy. And, you know, that's all in the city limits, but we share revenues from out in that area, and so the county paid for half of the master plan to do the Burlowitz Master Plan for the engineering, and the city paid for the other half, but we both took our parts and paid for one thing together.
On the same subject, I see earth being moved out there. Is that just for infrastructure ponds or something like that sort?
You aren't at Hospital? Yes, that's the first pond. If you cross over 65 and come down there, and then you look to the left behind Hawthorne, you'll see a giant pond back there. Well, there'll be a series of ponds, the big one, the small one on that side of Veterans, and you'll cross Veteran, and they'll run at an angle towards the new Saney Hospital, and there'll be a series of ponds down there that will handle the drainage. And we actually have lined out where the roads are going to go and everything.
Mr. Brown, did you...
Yes, I guess I'm kind of a nervous Nellie, but the amount of time it's going to take to, I guess, to install our infrastructure out there, is that going to affect the desirability of this land? Well, I mean, land is always more desirable if the water's in, the sewer's in, all the stormwater's in, and all the drainage is in. I mean, that's certainly the case, but there's no other prudent financial way to do this other than establish this together, to take the time to raise some money and do what we can. We're just going to have to slow, I mean, that's just, that's just the reality of it, because all our other money is going towards mandated, you know, projects that we have to do. I mean, right now, we have the $30 million rural avenue, Jerkies Run, which is almost seven miles long from beginning to end under construction, and then soon as that's done, there's another mandated project that has to be done to stay on the timeline that we have to complete it by.
So, we're talking at least five or 10 years?
I would hope that maybe we would have it out to Eric's Airport in a little bit quicker than five years, but certainly going on up, it will be five to 10 years unless something really, really unusual and spectacular happens. I'm a pretty conservative guy, so we're... Look, I'm... Thank you, sir.
And just for information, the map indicates that the already developed residential areas are excluded from this TIF, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions of council? Did you have somebody else that you wanted to...
Yes, I have the legal counsel actually describe the whole process.
Good evening. Hello, I'm Heather James from Ice Miller. I'm filling in for Lisa Lee, she's on a beach somewhere. So, as you guys already know, the Redevelopment Commission already adopted its declaratory resolution, which set forth the map for the new area and also all of the projects that the commission would like to accomplish. And then on October 15th, the Plan Commission adopted an order confirming the Redevelopment Commission's findings that the new area and the projects conform to the plan of development for the city. So, the resolution before you this evening is simply ratifying that Plan Commission order that was adopted on the 15th. And assuming you move forward with adopting that resolution this evening, the next step is for the Redevelopment Commission to hold a public hearing, and after that hearing, they will adopt a resolution confirming the declaratory resolution that they've previously adopted, and at that time, the ball will be back in your court, and you will have the opportunity to consider approval of creation of the area. So, I'm happy to answer any questions about the resolution that you may have.
Any questions?
It almost sounds like Abbott and Costello, who's done first. The one group that's doing this and then go ahead.
But it will come back to us.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any comments from council? Any comments from members of the audience on this proposed TIF area out by the Hoosier Heartland Corridor and State Road 25? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi.
Hi.
Clinker.
Hi.
Reynolds.
Hi.
Campbell.
Hi.
Brown.
Hi.
Aldous Meyer.
Hi.
Williamson.
Hi.
Downing.
Hi.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you, the resolution is passed. Now, we will go back to the regular order of resolutions, and the next resolution and order would be Resolution 2014-17.
A Resolution of the Common Council of the City of Lafayette approving a lease between Lafayette Redevelopment Commission and Lafayette Redevelopment Authority.
And what's the pleasure of council, Mr. Clinker?
I move here Resolution 2014-17.
Thank you, Mr. Heidi.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Carson.
Dennis Carson, Economic Development Director. I'm going to address Resolutions 17, 18, and 20. Again, these are two separate bond issues. The first two bond issues deal from the Creasy Central Consolidated TIF, and the last one is with the Twickenham TIF. The mayor's going to make some more comments as well, but briefly, as I outlined, at the last, the Council Caucus meeting, a couple of things have converged here. One is that we have several public works projects and several public facility projects that have come to the forefront and need our immediate attention, and also we have these issues with legacy TIFs, which are TIFs that were established before 1995 and formerly did not have an expiration date, and now they do. So, with this first bond issue in the Creasy Central TIF, there are several projects that it will address, and these are, one is the Big Four Depot renovations to it, repairs and maintenance to the structure that will include HVAC, plumbing, mechanical electrical upgrades, as well as lighting, insulation, decking, roofing, ADA, accessibility, painting, and other general construction to ensure its proper use and sustainability over the long term. We're also looking at parking garage renovations, which will include structural and concrete repairs, stairways, entrances, doors, elevators, lighting, pay systems, office renovations, and general construction to ensure the building's safety and its structural integrity. Also looking at renovations through the Long Center for Performing Arts to St. John's Pavilion and the BUDS Building. That will also include HVAC repair, plumbing, mechanical electrical and plumbing upgrades, lighting, sound, seating, decking, roofing, ADA, accessibility, and other things to ensure its proper use and sustainability for long-term public benefit. We'll also be looking at improvements to Green Bush Street around 2200 Green Bush Street at the Payless Plaza and Market Square. That will include improvements for traffic flow, vehicle, and pedestrian safety and environmental development. Also be looking at the historic Joneses Gas Station over by the library, doing some structural repairs to that building and creating a park around it in junction with Tiffany County Public Library. And we're also looking at a series of street skate improvements in the downtown area, beginning with Fourth and South Streets around the Rifeus Apartments and Ichybon Restaurant, also on Second and Main Street around the Chase Plaza and the gazebo area, on Columbia Street on the north side of the block of the Lar House, Main Street and Fourth Streets around Salem Bank around that corner. We will also look at the Rome Drive, which is a complete reconstruction of that road between Shenandoah Drive and Creasy Lane, and then other street skate improvements along the Main Street corridor, including the first phase from Fourth Street to Sixth Street, including the side streets, cross streets of Fifth and Sixth, and then the second phase, Main Street, Sixth to Eighth Street, which will also include the side streets of Seventh and Eighth. And that'll be for our first bond issue. And with that, I'll turn it over to the mayor for some comments, and we also have legal counsel here as well from Krieg Devault.
Just one thing before you leave.
Yes.
When was the parking garage built?
That was built in 1995, I believe.
What, concrete to me seems like it lasts a long time.
It does.
Was this concrete not done well or something, that we're having so much work to be done on quite a bit of the garage?
The concrete does last a long time, but not forever, and so it has a lot of wear and tear from all the vehicles that have been going up and down over the years and such. So, there have been some places where joints have, some of the concrete has spalled off and such and things, so we do need to look at those areas and make sure that they are structurally sound and then make repairs to them. It's not uncommon for this, garages over time do need repairs, in particular to the concrete.
And thank you for this listing.
Sure.
Dennis, you mentioned that gas station at the corner of Sixth and South Street?
Yes.
Is that city-owned, or is that, I thought that was a library property?
That's with the library, but we're doing a conjunction with them.
We're doing what?
We're doing it in conjunction with them.
The whole building or just the corner sidewalk?
Building and the corner, so, you know, we'll be looking at repairs to the building to make it more structural sound and to upgrade that, and also looking at the parking lot around there to make it a public park.
So, are we keeping the historical integrity of the building?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay. Any other questions of Dennis? All right. Thank you. Mayor?
I just want to reiterate a little bit what Dennis said, but not be redundant. I'm not sure I explained this very well the other night during the caucus, that, you know, these projects, these are actually the result of months of planning between Dennis and I, legal counsel, our financial advisors, to look at these projects that we know that we need to get done. We've had a study done of the Long Center, the Big Four Depot, the parking garage, looking at those projects that we need to get done, handle the legacy issue, but also tie that into our overall long-term capital plans and our other infrastructure plans. And so I want to assure the council that we have looked at this from every angle possible to pick these projects out, and also knowing that we have to get them done in two years. These are supposed to be done in two years, and so we have looked at our overall capital plan, looked at our expenditures, looked at what needs to be done, how's that fit into our overall plans that we have for roads, sidewalks, infrastructure, handicap ramps, you name it, and chose these projects that we felt both met all of those criteria and needs, and so that's how we came up with, so I wanted to make sure the council was aware that literally Dennis and I, with outside help, have been working on this for months going through these. And with that, I turn it over to our legal counsel.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm John Kirkwood with Krieg Devault. We are serving as bond counsel to the Lafayette Redevelopment Authority and the Lafayette Redevelopment Commission in connection with what we call the Consolidated Creasy Central Economic Development Area Project, and that term includes the litany of projects that both the mayor and Dennis have put before you. The reason we're here is because our redevelopment statute in Indiana requires that this council bless and approve the action of both the Redevelopment Authority and the Redevelopment Commission in connection with the issuance of bonds, which has been discussed both at the caucus meeting and tonight. In particular, on the 23rd of October, the Redevelopment Authority met and adopted a resolution authorizing the issuance of Redevelopment Authority lease rental bonds, which would be basically the genesis or source of the financing of the projects that we've discussed. And that bond resolution authorized bonds to be issued in an amount not to exceed $16,600,000 with a maturity not to exceed 26 years, I think technically the maturity will be at 25 years, an interest rate not to exceed 6% and a price not less than 98% along with to-be-determined optional and mandatory sinking fund redemption provisions. Thereafter, following the adoption of that resolution, the Lafayette Redevelopment Commission adopted a resolution approving a lease agreement, and that lease agreement is basically between the commission and the authority, and it provides lease rental payments, which are sufficient to timely pay the principal and interest on the lease rental bonds that I just described. Following the approval of that lease agreement, the commission then adopted another resolution, which is a pledge resolution, and that resolution pledges to the payment of lease rentals, both taxing from the finance revenues, and if those are not necessary, a special benefits tax. As you recall, during the caucus meeting, we discussed how those two work, and the backup, that is, the special benefits is simply there to what I'll call prime the pump. It's what drives the interest rate down on the otherwise bonds secured by TIF revenues. Now, we do have adequate TIF revenues, and H.J. Umba, your financial advisor, is going to come up and give a presentation on how that coverage works, et cetera, but in any events, we have a pledge resolution, which was also adopted by the commission, again, to secure lease rentals. We're here tonight to consider adoption of Resolution Number 2014-17, which is this council's approval of the action taken by the Redevelopment Authority in authorizing the issuance of the lease rental bonds, and then Resolution 2014-18, which is this council's approval of the lease agreement between the commission and the Redevelopment Authority. I'm happy to answer any questions.
And then procedurally, will we have to look at this again, or is this the final approval?
This is the final approval.
Okay. And then they go out to be let for the bonds?
Yes, there'll be a public sale of the bonds as presently intended, and again, I think that Jason Semler and Sean Malloy from H.J. Umba are going to talk to you about that.
Mr. Campbell?
The next person, are they going to talk about this idea that you do not put these up for a competitive bid?
Yes, yes.
Okay, that's fine.
Yes.
It did not work out?
Again, I think that Sean, do you guys want to come up and...
He can, he can get that later, that'll be fine.
Okay.
I think you did a marvelous job explaining this, but one other thing, when you go background, where are the funds coming from to pay for this particular bond issue?
Okay.
I think most of us know, but some of the public may not, and I think that they should be made aware of it.
You have a very large, what's called, economic development area that was created many, many years ago, prior to July 1 of 1995, and in that economic development area, over the years, as new investment has come into the area, the incremental assessed value from that new investment has been captured by the Redevelopment District, Redevelopment Commission, and has been allocated into an allocation fund, which has been available to the city to undertake, through its Redevelopment Commission, undertake these very improvements. So, that, that large area consists of a number of allocation areas, and again, over the years, the assessed value, incremental assessed value, post-July 1 of 1995, has increased significantly, and so now the property taxes from this incremental assessed value that are being captured are now available to do these unique things the city's able to do.
Thank you. There'll be a test on this later, folks. Pay attention. Thank you.
You're quite welcome.
Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Kirkwood?
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Sean Malloy with Umba. Jason Semler is here with me as well. We've been through some of the details of the financing in previous meetings, so I'm going to hit the highlights here tonight. As Dennis described, there is a laundry list of projects. The total project cost of all those comes out to about $14 million. As John described, the source of funding for those projects will be a lease rental bond through the Lafayette Redevelopment Authority, estimating that bond issue right now at a little over $16 million. That takes care of the projects as well as some miscellaneous expenses that go along with financing, underwriters' discount, debt service reserve fund, that kind of thing. I will hit on the coverage that John spoke to just a minute ago. As we've talked about before, the tax increment from these allocation areas has grown such over the years that it is now very healthy, up to over $9 million from all four of these allocation. As we've talked about before, the tax increment from these allocation areas has grown such over the years that it is now very healthy, up to over $9 million from all four of these allocation areas combined. Currently, the, there are six outstanding bond issues payable from tax increment from these allocation areas. The 2014 lease rental bonds will be the seventh bond issue. Having said that, the TIF is healthy enough to cover the debt service on these outstanding obligations up to seven times, 700% coverage. I think that hits on the highlights, if you have any other questions, feel free, I'm here to answer them.
I think they alluded that you were going to discuss the competitive bidding versus the original bidding that we talked about a week ago.
Sure. We have spoken to a couple of particular underwriters as looking at that option through private placement of this deal. So we're still looking through one of the analysis for those. One of the analyses is not going to work, in our opinion, as in the best interest of the city, so it's looking more and more like that this financing will be accomplished through a competitive sale. That way, we can make sure that the city, based on the competitive bids on the day of the sale, gets the lowest interest rate possible.
What is the value of the competitive bid versus the other bid process that you talked about? I mean, in theory, if it's competitive, you're going to get the best price.
Sure. In theory, on the day of a competitive sale, you'll receive three, four, five bids from particular underwriters. Those, those underwriters are competing with one another, they know that there's competition out there, so they are trying to bring the lowest interest rate possible to the city and achieve that value that you're speaking of, through a negotiated sale or a private placement. You know what you're getting upfront, if you take that to the market, there is a chance that that is not the best interest rate.
Why would it not be the best, I guess?
My name is Jason Semler, also a principal at H.J. Umball, so just to add on what Sean had mentioned, sometimes it's beneficial to do a private placement, because certain underwriters, they have groups of people they sell bonds to, and they may have a specific interest in the city of Lafayette, or deals with this kind of security, or this kind of 25-year life term. So we looked at those particular underwriters that approached us, and said they might have a particular interest or particular buyers that might have given us favorable interest rates. But based upon what they were able to find from their buyer group, purchaser group, found out that on one, this is 25-year term, longer than typical, because most bonds are around 20 years, the way we're structuring this around your outstanding bonds, they just felt like, you know, probably would be better to do a competitive bid, to go out to the more open market like insurance companies. And the same thing for the other underwriter, they had looked at some things, that we asked if there's any creative ideas that they may have, based upon some of their purchasing group, and basically, to this point, with what they've supplied us so far, we felt like doing a competitive bid, where we have the day that everyone in the market potentially could buy the bonds, that we're guaranteed that you'll get the best rate on that day.
Thank you both.
We were hoping part of the thing that they offered us is that part of the financing, Sean mentioned, the project's around $14 million, but the bond issue's around $16 million, a big chunk of that difference is the debt service reserve that we always set aside, that way if settlement comes in late, there's, you know, some mother nature, attorney general come by, runs to the city, the TIF isn't there, you don't have to rely upon that property tax backup, it is just a backup, you had that reserve in place. Some purchasers don't require that debt service reserve, or doesn't require the maximum that we would require if the bonds rated, and they were hoping to find someone like that, and they were able to find anyone, again, with this type of term.
Okay, thank you. So the bottom line here is, as you indicated, the TIF is bringing in approximately $9 million a year, is that right? And that's more, based on your analysis, that's more than enough to cover the payments for the existing six bonds we have, and then the payments due on this new bond, that will still cover it enough where we have over 700% coverage, we'll still have a lot of money left, is that right?
Sufficient revenue to do other projects, but...
Okay.
...I'm sure you probably do, that you'll have enough fun to do that.
And this particular project will be guaranteed then by the, by a portion of those TIF funds coming in as lease payments, right? And then you said the special benefit property tax backup, that's just an additional guarantee, but it's very unlikely, given the excess revenue we're going to have, that we'll ever actually have to impose that special benefit tax. But that is an element in here, and it's designed to make the bonds more attractive on the market, okay?
And maybe your other bonds that you have outstanding have that backup as well?
Yeah. Thank you. Any other questions? Any questions or comments from council? Any comments from the general public on these TIF bonds? Seeing none, we will have a roll call vote on Resolution 2014-17.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you, the resolution is passed, now Resolution 14-18.
A resolution of the common council of the city of Lafayette approving the issuance of the Lafayette Redevelopment Authority lease rental bonds of 2014 Consolidated Creasy Central Economic Development Area Project.
What's pleasure to the council?
Mr. President, I move that we hear and approve Resolution 2014-18.
Mr. Allersmeyer. Then moving seconded to consider Resolution 2014-18, it's still regarding the Creasy Central TIF issues that were just presented to us. Any questions or comments by council? Any additional comments by members of the audience on this particular resolution? Then we'll proceed with the roll call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you, the resolution is passed, thank you gentlemen for your presentations. Resolution 2014-20.
A resolution of the city of Lafayette, Indiana approving the issuance of bonds of the city of Lafayette Redevelopment District.
And what's Ms. Lisa Williamson?
I move for approval of Resolution Number 2014-20.
Mr. Downing, thank you. Mr. Carson.
This is the second bond, it's a smaller bond for the Twickenham TIF, it has some of the same issues that we have with the Central Creasy TIF, in that it's a legacy TIF, and this particular project for the Old Romney Road is larger than our cash we can pay it at this time, so we're looking at doing a bond, a $5.3 million for 25 years, and this project consists of widening Old Romney Road from a two-lane to a four-lane road between Twickenham Boulevard and State Road 25, including a new storm sewer system with a detention pond, a water main relocation, improved bus bump-out trail and sidewalk. The intersection between Twickenham Boulevard and Old Romney Road will be reconstructed as a multi-lane roundabout with Central Island with irrigation and landscaping. So with that, I will turn it over to the mayor, and then our legal counsel from Bose McKinnon Evans on this particular bond, and H.J. Umball is also our financial advisor, he'd be happy to answer any questions as well.
Thank you.
Good evening, council members, I'm Dennis Otten with Bose McKinnon Evans for the bond council on this transaction, and I'll keep it brief, because the presentation that John just gave pretty much sums up very similarly to what we're asking for this evening. On October 23rd, the Redevelopment Commission adopted a bond resolution approving this bond issue for up to $5.3 million, it's a 25-year term for improvements in the Twickenham Redevelopment Area, and then by statute, the council has to approve that bond issue before we can move forward with the bond issuance process, and that's what this resolution is for, while you're here tonight. This will be the final approval by the council if it chooses to adopt this resolution. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. I guess one other thing I would add, similar to the bond issue that you just heard about, this one will be payable from TIF revenues from the Twickenham Economic Development Area with the property tax backup, that we wouldn't expect to be levied, but it, again, serves as additional security for the sale of the bonds when they could pass the market.
Mr. Clinker?
I see there's, the coverage is in the 200 range there towards the end, is that because it's residential, is that why there's typically a lower number of coverage than we did in the other section? Where's the assessed value differences?
Much smaller.
Smaller, okay, gotcha.
When do you foresee both of these bond issues going out for a bid?
We have a sale notice going, going right now to the papers.
Thank you, it doesn't look like there's any other questions, thank you.
Thank you.
Did we want to hear from the financial folks, Umball, did you guys have anything to weigh in on this particular one? I see that there's an, there's just one existing bond that we're paying through this TIF, and that's going to expire in about seven years?
That's correct.
Okay, and then the rest of it will just be this, this new bond that we're talking about?
That's correct.
Okay. Any other questions from financial council? Thank you.
There is a technical error on that particular bond request regarding the date, and it was in Section 3 of the resolution, it refers to subject redemption on July 15th of 2026, and it should be 2025. I'll consider that as a Scrivener's error, and ask for approval to change that from July 15th, 2026 to July 15th, 2025, as Scrivener's, as a Scrivener's error, Mr. Clinker?
Sir, moved.
Mr. Campbell?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, thank you. Any, I forget, did I call for public comment on the Twickenham TIF issue? That's before us now, any comments from members of the audience? Seeing none, we'll have a roll call vote.
Heidi?
Aye.
Clinker?
Aye.
Reynolds?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Brown?
Aye.
Allersmeyer?
Aye.
Williamson?
Aye.
Downing?
Aye.
Resolution passes eight to zero.
Thank you, the resolution is passed, again, thank you gentlemen for your presentations. All right, moving on then to reports of standing committees. The last committee we had was your committee, and we've already taken that up with the animal control ordinance, all right. Any reports of special committees? I don't think there are any outstanding, report by the mayor? Miscellaneous in new business, any councilmen on that? Reports of councilmen. Public comment, this is the opportunity that we present to members of the audience to come and address the council for any particular issue or topic that might be on your mind. We do remind you of our traditional rule that we ask that you keep your comments limited to three minutes. So with that, we will open our meeting up for public comment and invite anyone to come